Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Griffin City of Commission September twenty-sixth Board Meeting. At this time, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance led by Group Two's First Baptist Church Scout, Scoutmaster John Silver. These gentlemen just went through on citizenship community that I put on on September sixteenth, so they're working on it very fast. We're glad to have y'all here tonight. And then led, I thought, by the invitation by Commissioner Tinsley, since he's the third. Most gracious heavenly Father, we're here today to ask you your blessings and guidance in the tremendous rigor of these as elected officials. We pray for strength, love, knowledge, and understanding. Help us recognize and solve the problems ever presented. Make our solutions fair and just to the best interests of everyone. Help us overcome our shortcomings and keep us united as a team to work for the betterment of the city and its people. We pray in the name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, gentlemen. Moving toward the approval of the agenda, do we have a motion to approve?
The move.
This is Murray with motion, seconded by Mr. Tinsley. All in favor, please signal by raising hand. Five, zero. Under Presentations and Delegations, presentation of a Memorandum Meritorius Operator Award to Mike Melton by Dan Carter, Director of Water Waste Water, Brandon Lewis, for addressing the issue of Dr. Griffin's.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You've probably heard Mike won this award, was presented at the GAWP Annual Conference in Savannah in July, and we wanted to formally recognize him with this for you and all his peers. This is Dan Carter with AWWA.
Thank you, Brandon. Appreciate you inviting me down here to present this award. As mentioned, I'm Dan Carter. I am the current president-elect of the Georgia Association of Water Professionals and the past Chair of the Georgia Section of AWWA. This year, annually, we present an Operator's Meritorious Service Award, and this year's award representative was Michael Melton. This award is always presented annually to somebody who has distinguished themselves with a special performance in one or more of the following areas: continuous compliance with public health standards in finished water, consistent and outstanding contribution to plant maintenance thereby prolonging the life of useful equipment, the development of new and/or modified equipment for significant process modifications to provide for a more efficient or effective treatment, special efforts in the training of treatment plant operators, and consistent and outstanding contribution to operation and/or maintenance of distribution lines, pump stations, reservoirs, and water treatment plants. I'm honored to present this to Michael Melton this year. I've known him for many years. In addition to just being deserving of this award, he's a great leader in our water industry, and you guys are very lucky to have him, so I want to present this award, this year's FOMSA Award. Not much. Mike, would you like to say anything?
Thank you.
Dan, thank you for coming down. We appreciate you recognizing Mike, and thank you, Brandon, for a great team you have. Item two is Presentation of Proclamation declaring September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three to October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three to be Latino Hispanic Heritage Month in the City of Griffin. Members of the City of Griffin's employee diversity and inclusion team will accept these proclamations. Alexis and your group, George.
From the Citizens Diversity and Inclusion Council that will also accept.
So proclamation from the City of Griffin for Latino and Hispanic Heritage Month, two thousand and twenty-three, whereas the nation celebrates Latino and Hispanic Heritage Month from September fifteenth to two thousand and twenty-three to October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and whereas the month-long celebration recognizes the valuable contributions made by residents of Latino and Hispanic descent to all aspects of American life, including leadership in public service, business, and arts, and education, and civil rights, and whereas Latino and Hispanic Heritage Month provides a special opportunity for teachers and schools as well as public and private organizations to focus on the many Latino and Hispanic Americans who live lives of shaped art, common history, and heritage, and whereas this proclamation will highlight the importance of celebrating our city's multiculturalism and working together to achieve our goals. Now therefore, being resolved, that the Board of Commissioners of the City of Griffin does hereby proclaim September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three to October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three as Latino and Hispanic Heritage Month, and the City of Griffin and all citizens to recognize the role that a Latino and Hispanic community has played in enhancing and contributing to the rich diversity of our city. In witness hereof, I have herein time set my hand and pause the seal of the City of Griffin to be affixed as twenty-sixth day of September in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-three. Douglas S. Holbert, in just. We're so glad to be able to present this to y'all, and we'd like to get a group picture with all the wonderful candidates.
So I have been invited to say something, and I will keep this very, very brief, but as a Latina myself, it is very lovely to see so many people come together to celebrate the very wide variety of cultures when you start talking about Hispanic and Latino and Latinx culture. We were discussing it today. There is some Mexican, Puerto Rican, Cuban, just in this room right now, and probably more that I didn't get to meet and say hello to. And it was such an interesting childhood growing up with this family that we had interesting foods and interesting music and fantastic funny moments, and it was interesting growing up in the South. So I just wanted to say thank you so much for recognizing our fantastic, wonderful people, and thank you for celebrating with us.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Next item is moving to Citizen Comments. At this time, the mayor opens the forward comments room from the audience. Comments related to specific agenda items not listed on the agenda for a public hearing or should concern within the jurisdiction of the city. Commission meetings serve the purpose of conducting city business in a form for the unlimited expression of opinion. The mayor reserves the right to limit comments to matters to maintain the city business and may refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for resolution. With that being said, is there anybody on my left side, like, come before the board? Anyone on my left side? Be on my right side, please come forward. You're fine.
One is your name, eleven eighteen Pine Valley Road, for right now, on the front of moving, College Street. I've already talked to Jessica about this, I've talked to Holly about this, and I know Dr. Keller before he passed away, pushed an effort to put a sidewalk down the rest of College Street from Finley all the way down to Morningside, and a lot of the people that were representative during that time did not want it that lived on College Street, especially the Blakes, myself, my mom, Janice Cobb, who now owns her mother's house, does not want it there, the Harrisons don't want it there, Eric, I don't know what his last name, that lives on the corner of Finley, and College does not want it there, the Harrisons, no, the people that live between the Harris and Janice Cobb, I don't know what her name is, I spoke with her last week before I left to go out of town, I've been going in and out of town a lot, but anyway, she really wanted a sidewalk if it didn't mess up her parking spot. This is where Louis Ghoston used to live, okay? For those that remember where Louis lived, okay? The other thing is, is that the city guys got a little ahead of themselves and started putting out orange things over the telephone pole and also marking in my yard, sixteen feet into my yard. So you take sixteen feet plus the middle, and you're getting almost to, almost to that fifty-foot mark. You do that, you pull that pole in, then that brings the electrical service underneath my oak tree. I am not going to trim my oak tree again. I've already spent like five thousand dollars trimming limbs. I will not pay for that. I don't want these people that are walking up and down the street that close to my yard, neither does Nancy Blake, neither does Andrew Blake. They don't want it in their yard, okay? You're gonna mess up their front entrance, you're gonna mess up my front entrance. I'm asking you to take that money and use it for the tornado victims. I think it would be better spent with that new construction spent for tornado victims. They need it more than we do, okay? The other thing is, is that I walk my dog while we're still living on Pine Valley, up and down Maple Drive and down Pine Valley, the speeders are getting ridiculous, from five-thirty to seven-thirty at night, those guys are running like a racetrack. Saturday morning early, you got motorcycle traffic that is just flying down that road, and one of them is an orange motorcycle, okay? The other thing is, is that I found this to be a little bit of a problem today when I went up to the police department to make a report on a hijacked prepaid card from Kroger's, and the police officer I spoke with, I will not give you the name or their sex or anything else like that, when they asked me where I live, where I had the forms of everything as far as copies made that they needed, because I filed with the FBI, filed with the FTC. Is it Pine Valley in the county? I think a police officer in Griffin, Georgia should know where the city limits is, okay? Personally, okay? That's all I got to say. Y'all have a nice evening.
If you can be on my left side, please come before the board. If you can be on my right side, please come forward. I've seen a call one second right here. Michael. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Tana Marie Morrison. I live on Kentucky Avenue in Griffin, Georgia. Good evening. I will be, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I will be reading a brief summary of my first formal written complaint being filed with the City of Griffin and Griffin Utilities. It is with great disappointment that I have been placed in this position. As a resident of Griffin, Georgia, and customer of Griffin Utilities, I have attempted to address multiple concerns with the City of Griffin and Griffin Utilities over the last five years. Unfortunately, to date, I continue to experience a lack of transparency, failure to respond, and a lack of compassion or concern for power-dependent or life-support customers. I received email confirmation on July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three from Jennifer Freeman, who's the Director of Griffin Utilities, and then on August the seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, from Mrs. Jessica O'Connor, who's the City Manager of Griffin, stating that Griffin Utilities does not have a life-support customer distinction. I played a recording of the Griffin Utilities Automated System at the City Commission Meeting on August the twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three. No one acknowledged my concerns, the recording, or responded to my questions. At the September the twelfth, September twelve, two thousand and twenty-three City Commission Meeting, I complained that the recording had been removed the day after I played it at the previous meeting. Again, no one acknowledged my concerns, the recording, or responded to my questions, nor addressed the public as a whole, which is what I requested. On September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, I publicly voiced my concerns and complaints on social media. On September the fourteenth, the following day, I received an email from Mrs. Jessica O'Connor stating, end quote, "Current City of Griffin staff were not aware of the recording posted in your account as a life-support customer until the night of August twenty-second, when you played the recording in a Board of Commissioners meeting. After that night, Mrs. Freeman asked several of her electric staff if they knew of the message and its origination. A former retired employee asked our outage management system provider, Data Voice, to add that distinction to a customer if there was a doctor's note in Coggsdale related to the health of a resident, which is a distinction made for payment purposes. As evidenced by your concern as to whether that related to FEMA funding, that distinction should never have been placed, nor was it ever authorized to be placed on a message related to outage management software. There is not a distinction for health of a resident when it relates to outages on the electric system. Because of that confusion, I asked Ms. Freeman to have the message removed immediately. At no time have we tried to be anything other than transparent. You brought the matter to our attention. I agree that it created confusion once we determined how and why the message was placed in your account, and I had it removed in order to eliminate confusion for other customers." This email response only brings up additional questions and concerns. Number one, I didn't get any response until I went to social media. I came here twice. I sent two emails before coming here twice. No response or in any acknowledgement until I went to social media. So these additional concerns are: Why was no one aware that an employee made this unauthorized request to the outage management system, Data Voice? What is the name and title of this employee? Why was there no concern about this distinction when I first posed the questions a month prior via email? As a municipality-owned utility provider with policies approved by this city Board of Commissioners, why was this not addressed to the public either as an agenda item or through a special meeting? As of today, it still has never been added as an agenda item. And I keep asking that you guys address the public as a whole. This doesn't just affect me. Has the City Board of Commissioners given the city manager authorization to make changes to Griffin Utilities policies without prior approval from this Board of Commissioners? Mrs. O'Connor stated that there is not a distinction for health of a resident when it relates to outages on the electric system. Unfortunately, there is no registry for power-dependent or life-support customers, and instead of implementing one or keeping this distinction in place, it was swiftly and abruptly removed. Ironically, just this, the last couple weeks, just while driving around metro Atlanta, I observed billboards all over that have stated that September is Preparing This Awareness Month. So what is the City of Griffin and Griffin Utilities' emergency preparingness plan for life-support customers, seniors, and individual electric account holders as a whole? Thank you.
Here, we also like to come forward. Moving into public hearings, this time of hearings, we conduct to allow public comments on specific advertised issues such as reasonably ordinance, policy development, operating budgets, and other legislative action to be considered by the City Commission. Tonight, we will receive comments regarding proposed text amendment to Unified Development Code, Article Five, Amendment Section Fifty, five oh four E, and Adding Section Five oh four H for the purpose of allowing chicken keeping as an accessory use subject to limitations set forth there. And Mr. Jacobs, if anybody wants to speak on this matter, has signed, she, pro or against the issue there? All right, so call item Public Hearing. At this time, the Work Commissioners will conduct the public hearing for Agenda Item Two, as noticed in the rank in the agenda as follows. Receive comments regarding proposed text amendment to Unified Development Code, Article Five, Amendment Section Five oh four E, and Adding Section Five oh four H for the purpose of allowing chicken keeping as an accessory use subject to limitations set forth there. Printing copies of the adopted standard governing exercise applicable to the aforementioned application, that is for consideration, and procedures governing hearing are available to be public. Speakers are responsible or established to meet records for the presentation of facts and supporting documentation and other evidence for consideration by the Board for review of appeal if applicable. The Director of Planning and Development, Director Chad Jacobs, will address the following ordinance, amended on behalf of the city. Timer will be set for ten minutes by staff, but time may be extended by a period of time when we give you a comment during this hearing. At this time, Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen. If you'll ever back on August twenty-second, just to pick very, all this minute, there's a workshop with y'all, and as a result, I just want to conclude the hearing in this text amendment. This will be adding the Section Five oh four E, which is Subpart Two, Subpart Ten will be followed, chicken keeping for purposes of companionship and egg production for sharing through regulations and limitations set forth in Section Five oh four H. Section Five oh four H, the next section that will be added to the accessory section as well, that will be followed. The way of keeping the chickens for purposes of companionship and/or egg production shall be permitted as an accessory use in all residences, running districts providing comments as follows: A must be on a parcel no less than quarter acre in size; B no one of the chickens shall be allowed in the parcel; C no roosters shall be allowed; D chickens must be kept in place area behind primary structures; E chickens must be no more than six feet in height at the parkage, and surrounding areas must be properly maintained, but plans are not becoming nuisance; P chickens to feed at least three days at all times, preventing potential nuisance, including non-protected or other buildings; and finally, G chickens shall only be kept in kept and/or for egg production, chickens shall not be kept or swallowed. Staff is recommending approval of the text amendment as presented. September eighteenth, the planning and zoning board recommending additional approval with a vote of five, nothing, by adding the following of issues that will be brought forth by City and their best members of the board. First, required of chickens to be kept in a proper enclosure, you have to find a proper enclosure. Certain distance area behind the primary residence; and two, required of chicks, none be sold in public on all sides, and the cost usually highly building-wide, due to certain conditions. Three, required minimum setbacks of five feet from our property line; four, assigned no one's supposed to reach for two and one; and finally, five, there is a three-inch between, uh, and a length. Again, staff is recommending what was presented to you, but we just wanted to also point out to you that this was additional recommendation, five, a citizen with the planning zone is only recommended that. Please note, keep in mind and respect the zoning procedures law, a few kind of discussions discussed previously. If the additional language recommended by the planning and zoning board, if y'all want to go with that or import some of that language, we must re-adapt pursuant to the zoning procedures law. Again, this, I do want to note that this isn't a deterrent to shy away from that, but just wanted to kind of, a reminder that we would have to re-adapt that, and that will go on your next board meeting, your next available board meeting, to which we can comply with noticing that ground is under zoning procedures law. So that will be number fourteen, assuming you want to add any of those additional recommendations that we're going to be doing.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. So at this time, we have no one that's signed up for or against, so let someone have their right to be added to this. Moving into, this time we will call, is that registered? At this time, does the board have any comments or speech by the board? If any will be reserved until the item is called to research and however, does anyone, one of the board have a question for staff or the group of this time?
One has a question.
Okay, go ahead and do it. Give Mike.
Is this, what's the word I'm looking for? Mediated by code enforcement? That's who's going to be in charge of enforcing this?
Yes.
Okay, so don't we have now in our community just kind of random chickens wandering around? How does that, this address that?
It would address chickens that are on individual properties, you know, so anybody that's raiding chickens and the egg production things like that that are on their property, any of those that are running free that, in my opinion, that would be addressed to animal.
Okay, yes, the main reason with chickens? And so, you will forgive my ignorance about chicken keeping, is it? My dog has on a tag in his collar, and so when it gets out, someone is able to him wholly responsible for a dead animal. What y'all gonna do when the chicken gets out?
Great, great question.
Because then how do we, right, eliminate this free-range kind of doing whatever?
Well, by code, they do have to be kept within the parcel in which they live, but as you were pointing out, and has been our concern, why we have, in my opinion, have not raised this before, is for those exact reasons. It makes it very difficult to enforce because they don't have a tag or come to you and call for it for the most part.
Or anything, so.
Right.
So I, I think these stipulations that are attached to it make sense to me, but I feel like there are some limitations to actually do, for these stipulations to matter, because how will we also know if it's only three chickens?
We agree. We, we were.
The property that we can't walk on because we're not allowed to go on people's private properties?
If there's a complaint that's generated by an area, we can recertification of that one.
Okay, so is there, where did this language come from? Is this like, was this the standard language that we got from Tomadi Okafor?
Well, if you'll remember, so this actually came from a request from several citizens that then came from you all as a board to look into it, see what we could find. I think Ms. Carden looked at.
The language is very similar, both between cities and counties, like we pulled larger than the following.
But we did tailor that more to a city-sized lot and made some more constricting requirements for those lots that are in the city, because we are not a county, and we do not have farming laws.
Yes. Okay, so. Right, so ideally, this works perfect, and only two or three people decide to become chicken keepers, and they keep them in their yards and poos them in, and great. Worst-case scenario, lots of people become chicken keepers, and now there's just lots of chickens that aren't in their yards, then it is an animal control? Like, I guess I'm just trying to see, in the event that it is, what actually happens is far outside the bounds of what this language covers? How, what is the mitigation process at that point? What are we doing?
On the issue too, there's off the top of code, and I'm totally worked, rather, on the front of the issue, so again, if this is, if there's a rooster and it's like five chickens, you know, on the property, that's obviously a violation, it's code, we just have to, uh, code enforcement, uh, so if it's chickens that are running on the road, you know, can I have a rooster? That, that's the point, so that would be a violation, so if they got out there and there's a rooster on the property, then that would be a violation, like what's presented in the board here.
I don't know, she said that animal shelter, like, what y'all gonna do with?
Great question.
I heard that. Yeah, I'm, I'm just, like, is it actually enforceable? Because what if you pull up to the house and there's seventeen chickens?
It, it's enforceable because we've done it before. I, when I was prosecuting in municipal court, I had a couple of chicken cases in municipal court because people had chickens, and before tonight, and maybe even after tonight, chickens aren't allowed in the City of Griffin. And so if you have chickens on your property and those chickens belong to you, then you will be cited for that. Now, if they're chickens that we can't prove, it's no different than a stray dog. The difference to me is the animal shelter has the ability to take in a stray dog, sometimes, not all the time, because a lot of times they're full. So I don't know that there's any difference in a stray dog when the shelter is full versus a chicken.
Is it a, so let's say that they're found to be in violation, seventeen chickens, they're sighted, whatever case it is, there's no place to them, is the, is the onus on them to remove them from the property, or are they continuing to sit? I, I just feel like it's one of those things, like, we don't ask the questions now, and then something pops up and.
So in that instance, what has happened in the past is they were cited until they chose to remove them. How they removed them was not up to the municipal court's jurisdiction nor my prosecution. That was up to them. Um, that was up to them. Um, I can tell you it was a difficult discussion because she considered these chickens, one of them, her pets, and so she had to decide what to do with them. Um, I'm actually a little surprised she's not back here tonight because she told me that night, or that day, that if we ever put chickens back into play, she would make sure she came and said that we needed chickens because she had chickens. Um, so I, you know, how you pick which three, if you have seventeen, I, that's up to the.
We're supposed to, uh, to, you know, to, uh, primary access, or, 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 uh, to, uh, to, uh, to, uh, hard happen because we take, or, uh, the chickens, and then, uh, uh, they actually put in a, uh, a, uh, eating place. And that, so what, what are we doing? You know, you got hangers, and you got lots of.
This is a, these are all questions that Mr. Jacobs, Ms. Carden, and myself have all discussed. So it is up to you all to decide from a legislative policy standpoint whether you or not you want chickens in the city. These are all great questions that we really don't have a lot of answers to. Um, but we were asked to present an ordinance. This is the best one that we could come up with based on the, um, situation that we find ourselves in, and so it is a legislative decision on whether or not you allow chickens. As far as enforcement, we will have to deal with that depending on what your decision is. But yes, we agree that there are a lot of unanswered concerns that we all have.
Noted. No, no further questions.
Any other questions?
Okay.
This can close the public hearing. Agenda on item number two. All right, moving into the consent agenda, we're gonna take item four, four ten. If there's no objection, do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Mr. Murray with motion, Mr. Brock with a second. All in favor of considering him, please signal by raising hand. Six, zero, three. Moving into the regular agenda, the regular agenda, items, permits, and ways of commissioning or individuals will consider it and possibly take action. Item eleven, consider a new unified development code Article Five, Section five oh four E, Adding Section five oh four H for the purpose of allowing chicken keeping as an accessory use subject to limitations set forth there. We have a motion to approve the chicken ordinance. If it tends to be a motion, we have a second. Mr. McCorr with a second. Now we're gonna have discussion and opinions and.
I think that it is, um, I would like for people to have the ability, uh, chicken keep, certainly if it's on private property. However, I think as presented, and as it seems to be, um, the understanding of how it would be enforced, I feel like it is not sufficient. Um, and that it creates a situation where there's probably more questions to answer. Um, which then leads to it not being consistently enforced, um, and there's something to be, like, that you're afraid of. Um, so I do not think that this is the answer, um, this particular ordinance, what I'm, 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 uh, when we keep them, uh, that's it.
Any other questions? And the staff, right now, staff recommends, Mr. Jacobs, going with as proposed, but not adding the recommendations from the P C Z. We've got a motion, but our commission tendered, second by Mr. Ford, all in favor of the chicken ordinance, please signal by raising hand. All in favor, sign. We got three for Mr. Whelan, interpret.
Good gun, pass.
Nope.
Okay. Moving into item twelve, consider a golf equipment rental agreement for rental of golf carts, golf clubs, and other golf equipment provided to City of Griffin perpetually to be utilized at the Griffin Golf Course. Mr. McCorr with a motion, second by Commissioner Murray. Any questions here, especially, all in favor, please signal by raising hand. Six, zero. Item thirteen, consider the purchase of a two thousand twenty-four Ford F-five fifty pickup truck with service body for the Stormwater Department in the amount of eighty-six thousand seven hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventy cents, when they have gone forward and amended the budget accordingly. Mr. Murray with a motion, we have a second. Hold up, we have a second. All in favor, please signal by raising hand. Six, zero. Item fourteen, consider a T O M for photographs and holding brief for update of the prepared pre-sure model in the amount of forty thousand four hundred sixty-five dollars and amend the budget accordingly. Your motion approved. Mr. Brock with a motion, we have a second. Take it up by Mr. McCorr. All in favor, please signal by raising hand. Six, zero. Item fifteen, consider claim on behalf of Lola, foreign language, thanks, the front, reported any item matters twenty-nine, four, and associate stated September one, twenty-twenty-three, staff recommends denial. Your motion to deny. Mr. Murray with a motion, we have a second.
Mr. Denial.
For denial.
Okay.
Mr. Flowers with a second. All in favor of denial, please signal by raising hand. All in favor, sign. Five, one, Commissioner McCorr voting against. Item sixteen, is considered a real estate sales contract in Griffin housing authority for the acquisition of property located at five twelve, north of six, three. Your motion approved. Mr. McCorr with a motion, second by Commissioner Murray. All in favor, please signal by raising hand. Six, zero. Now, in our regular state of meeting, at this time, City Manager will.
Just a couple of dates to remember, uh, tomorrow, or, um, excuse, excuse me, Thursday night, Citizens Government Academy will be at Fire Station Two, so y'all are welcome to join us, meet the class. It's always an exciting night. Um, also, next week, we will be celebrating Public Power Week, um, and all of our utilities. So there will be a lot of happenings going on in customer service, um, every day, Monday through Friday, with a touch-a-truck event on Thursday night from three-thirty to five-thirty in the Bank Street Alley. It's supposed to be children-friendly, hopefully come after school and be able to look at all the different equipment that we have. Um, also, next Thursday is the G M A District Four Listening Session. So if you have not let us know, if you would like to attend, they are requiring an R S C P by Friday to be able to order lunch. So please get with either me or Ms. Bartholomew. It is, again, next Thursday, eleven to one, in Union on the campus of West Georgia. Um, and then lastly, I do feel that it is important at this point to discuss citizen comments and how we handle those within a commission meeting. A citizen comment section, as the mayor reads, is for a citizen to comment. It is not a dialogue between myself and a citizen, between you all and a citizen. It is strictly for comment, so it does not open up a public discussion at that time. If you would like to have something placed on the agenda, commissioners are allowed to request that. Um, the deadline for that is the Wednesday prior to the week of the commission meeting by five o'clock. We have to have the agenda item done by that time. So if there is something you would like on the agenda, please let me know. Um, also, once the governor and the president lifted the COVID state of emergency, we are not allowed to have comments made via Zoom. We did have someone raise their hand on Zoom, I think, in an attempt to make a citizen comment. You have to make those in person. Commissioners are exempt from that twice. That is it. So you can participate in a meeting via Zoom twice in one calendar year, um, but a citizen cannot. They have to be here in person, so I just wanted to clear up both of those things before we left any further tonight. That's it.
Mr. Whelan.
No comments?
Mr. Brock. Mr. Murray. Mr. Flowers.
No comment.
Mr. McCorr. Mr. Stevens with a second. And I just want to welcome everybody to the board. We're glad to have a full house tonight. And, um, scouts, they'll be wrapping up, um, doing, um, speaking up in our coverage. So, um, if they're last part of their, uh, for having enough here. Don't, Mr. Stevens, fair, Mr. Stevens, all right, my, it's, it's, uh, in the, in the. Commissioner by Commissioner Mur, uh, you know. Tensley, second by Commissioner Flowers. Thank you very much for being.